I'll call this meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons.
Here.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Here.
Councilmember Jack Sedick.
Here.
Councilmember Lizzo.
Here.
Councilmember McLean.
Here.
Councilmember Reiniker.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you. I would like to let everyone know that we lost one of our own this week, Michael Hamilton. Michael was a visionary whose contributions have profoundly enriched the cultural fabric of Kirkwood and the greater St. Louis area. He graduated from Kirkwood High in 1971, and he was the co-founder and artistic director of Stages St. Louis. His passion for performing arts was evident in every production he directed. And I think we probably all had the opportunity to see at least one, and they were fabulous. Over his 35 years, he led more than 100 shows, each reflecting his dedication to excellence and his unwavering commitment to the arts. His work not only entertained, but also inspired countless audiences and artists alike. Michael's influence extended beyond the stage. His leadership transformed stages into a cornerstone of our arts community, earning him numerous accolades, including the Arts and Education Council's 2019 Lifetime Achievement Award, which he shared with his co-founder, Jack Lane. In recognition of his remarkable contributions and in the mark he has left on our community, I, Liz Gibbons, do hereby proclaim January 10, 2025, as Michael Hamilton Day in the city of Kirkwood. We extend our deepest condolences to Jack Lane, to Michael's family, and all who have the privilege of working with him. Michael's passion, creativity, and love for the arts will forever be remembered and cherished. Let us honor his memory by continuing to support and celebrate the arts in our community, ensuring that his legacy endures for generations to come. Since we have no proclamations or public hearings tonight, we'll move to public comments.
The public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the City Council to listen to comments from citizens. It is not a question-and-answer session, and the City Council will not respond to comments or answer questions during this period. The mayor may refer any matter brought up to the City Council to the chief administrative officer or city clerk of action as needed.
Thank you. David, do we have anyone filling out a form?
Mayor and council, we have a couple of requests for comment this evening. The first is Jamie Scott.
Hello, and thank you for being here in this weather. I'm not getting paid enough for that. I'm Jamie Scott. I live at 1956 North Signal Hills, and I'm a Kirkwood antique at this point, born and bred here. My comments and concerns this evening are about Bill 11067, proposing an amendment to the Chapter 25 zoning and subdivision for accessory structures. I left copies of my comments here so that you could read them, and I invite feedback from any of you on an ongoing basis on the topic. Using an R1 zoned one-acre property as an example, the updated maximum size and lot coverage for an all-R1 use would be over 5,000 square feet, which is about 12.7% of the total lot area. I live on a lot that size, and so by definition, I don't find that objectionable or anything scary. I know there's a lot of complications to water runoff and sanitation and other things, but by definition, that is not a particularly big issue for me as a homeowner. And I do appreciate and support the addition of language with "single-family residential use" in several areas of the proposal. However, my concern is not so much the coverage with code-compliant structures, but my concern is how 2542 can be applied with 2545 and 2536, resulting in a potential end run around our single-family zoning codes. The potential ambiguity or abuse of 2545 for accessory dwelling units, not structures, that are allowed by special-use permit in our zones could create, in practice, a multifamily home in a single-family zone. What would this potential end run around our zoning code look like in practice? If I own a one-acre lot, and I build up to 2,500-square-foot accessory dwelling unit with a special-use permit as opposed to a non-habitable accessory structure, and I then chose to sublet that dwelling unit to another party, I have then, in practice, created two-family homes in a single-family zone. I'm asking that the Kirkwood City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission closely examine the ambiguities and the loopholes of 2545B and update language to prevent the construction and use of accessory dwelling units as standalone independent dwellings that can then be subleased and result in multifamily residential use of a single-family-zoned property. If accessory dwelling units are approved under special-use permits within any of the R zones and property owners exercise short-term rental options under 2536K, then there is significant risk of landowners creating multifamily residences in single-family zones for their financial benefit. As a homeowner, I should be able to expand my home to accommodate my family and any other use, whether I want to build an art studio, or a pool house, or anything else.
Jamie, we've got to have you wrap it up here.
All right, our three minutes? Okay. But I should not be able to create a single-stana home family residence in addition to my own, creating a multifamily home in a single-family zone.
Thank you.
Lynda Fenton.
Good evening, and thank you for hearing us tonight. I find it to be kind of ironic that 25 years ago, Jamie and I came to this very room. Paul, you were on PMZ, and we fought against multifamily in our R1 zoning. Can you believe it's back again? I agree with everything Jamie said, and I want you to consider that I thought years ago, we quit permitting houses to be built behind other houses that had a driveway. I forget what they were called. I know Paul would.
Flag lots.
Flag lots, and yet this is what these ADUs become, is flag lots. I really do believe that if you're going to put a second home on the same lot, it should be rezoning and not a special-use permit. I think this gives way too much power to staff, I don't not take it personally, Jonathan, and takes away the accountability of the council to the people. Because by writing it in for staff to approve, we have no accountability with the council, and neither do you. So, we are all investors in this community, and so we're equity investors. We put our hard-earned dollars into buying this. And we believe that when we buy a home in R1, that we've signed a contract with the City of Kirkwood to uphold R1, one residence per acre lot. This denies us our rights to have an R1 lifestyle. We're now going to have these little Lego lot houses in everybody's backyard. Have you thought about what that's going to look like? I really do not care what the national trends are. It's what's right for our community. We don't need Lego block houses in the back of everybody's backyard. Come on now. I mean, stormwater, have you thought about that? The other thing is, I really don't appreciate that by making this a special-use permit and not a rezoning, you have taken away our rights under the Missouri State Constitution. The statute is 89.060, where it says that, "In protest of such a duly signed and acknowledged change, 30% or more of the areas within 185 feet get to sign a petition." And if we all, if 30% or more disagree, then you all have to have a supermajority. You have violated our rights, according to the Missouri State Constitution. I was told, I could not call Mr. Hassel to question that. The only answer I got was from Jonathan, and I appreciated him call, I think I sent it to all of you, the only person who answered me was Jonathan. And he said that we can do whatever we want, and we can overrule the Missouri Constitution. Really? I can't wait for the new Attorney General to take office, because I'm going to go meet him, and I'm going to ask if this is really, thank you. It's not fair.
Mayor and council, there are no additional requests for comment at this time.
Thank you. We will move to the consent agenda to have a motion.
Motion.
Okay. Are there any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes. We'll now move into unfinished business, Bill 11060A.
Sorry.
That's okay. You were looking up Lynda's state statue, right?
No, not exactly. Yes, Mayor and council, that's an ordinance approving a major site plan and granting an amendment to the special-use permit for vehicle sale and rental at 10525 and 10725 Manchester Road, Loufus Toyota, subject to certain conditions.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill 11060A?
I have, I think.
Councilmember Schaefer.
A motion for you, Mayor. On line item four, I'd like to make a motion, just read it, it's easier for me. So, "The existing fence shall be replaced with sound-mitigating and site-proof fence not less than eight feet in height and made of Simtech or comparable composite product. This shall include along the north side of the alley right-of-way to the extension of the east property line northward."
I second.
Okay. Yes, okay. Are there discussions on the motion?
The only discussion is, I'm getting rid of the cementation. There you go. And going to, the life expectancy of this fence is just as long as the cementitious. It does the same, it does the same thing. It sound mitigates and so forth. And I've also talked to the petitioner, and he has said that he will maintain it all the time. So, and there we are.
He has also said that they're putting in more landscaping than required.
Spectacular. That's my proposal.
I just wanted to clarify that, okay, I wasn't here when you proposed putting in cementitious instead of the Simtech or Simtech-like fence, which was the original requirement of this. Can you refresh or actually inform me? Are you basically going back to the original condition?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Good. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other discussion?
Well, I think, I appreciate this. You know, we saw the cost estimates, it was over three times the cost for a cementitious wall. So, and the Simtech, you know, we've had other businesses use Simtech fencing. It's of high quality. I think it's going to do a great job there for Loufus.
Yes, we'll achieve what we're trying to get.
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay, okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. And then now we've got, and the motion passes, so now we've got to go to the bill itself.
The bill is amended.
The bill is amended. And is there discussion on that? The bill is amended, no, okay. Roll call.
Mayor Gibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Jack Sedick.
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker.
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Bill 11065.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the provisions of the Municipal Code, Chapter 25, Zoning and Subdivision, related to marijuana facility or medical marijuana facility regulations in Section 25-36.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill 11065?
I have one.
Councilmember Jack Sedick.
Mayor, I motion to amend this bill, Section 1, where it reads 500 feet to say 1,000 feet.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion.
My, you know, we talked about tattoo parlors were 1,000 feet. It's 1,000 feet from parks and schools, or not from parks, from schools. And I thought it just made sense.
Okay. We will, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The motion carries. Now we go to the bill. Any discussion on the bill?
As amended.
As amended, sorry.
All right.
Okay, all those.
Just a quick question. I don't know if you researched if 1,000 feet, if that would affect where they could be located in Kirkwood by changing it from 500 to 1,000. Obviously, that's going to restrict and limit where they can be located. Was there any analysis?
No, it's, you know, we didn't change the district. You know, I didn't, you know, again, I'm not sure that, I didn't look at numbers and all that. So, I think we're good.
I see what you're trying to do, just line it up with the tattoo parlors. So, yeah, that's fine, okay.
It makes sense.
Uniform it. Yep.
Okay. All, roll call.
Mayor Gibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Jack Sedick.
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker.
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Great. Now we'll move into new business, Bill 11064.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the provisions of the Municipal Code, Chapter 25, Zoning and Subdivision, for sidewalk requirements not part of a subdivision in Section 2569A2IA.
Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I will start it off. As I reviewed this ordinance, I don't believe that making this change is going to result in us having fewer sidewalks in any kind of significant degree. I think it really will have a very small impact across the board, because it's to a very specific kind of development. The only impact is what would be possibly required of homeowners if they don't do, you know, if they are doing 100% of an addition. That's, you know, if they do below that, it's not going to matter anyway. And I understand there's a waiver in the current ordinance that we're looking at changing, but it puts those who own a house on some city-designated pedestrian pathway more than likely not able to get the waiver, and others, not on such a designated street or pathway, more likely to get one. So, even with the waiver, it could be, you know, somebody could not have to do it. And so, that concern of having fewer sidewalks could still be a problem, because it got waived. And so, again, I think the ambiguity of that kind of puts some homeowners going to be accountable, or those doing development at a different level than others. The city's requiring a five-foot sidewalk, and in many cases, those would be eliminating street trees, creating other problems along the ways. And I think we need to be reasonable as we navigate what makes sense. And again, if we made everybody in the city put a five-foot sidewalk in front of their house and cut down their trees, I think we're just creating more problems than we really need to create. Trees are a natural barrier as well, and I really do think, you know, even in a case that brought it to this point, you know, there is, they were healthy trees, and we're going to see, you know, our forester possibly say, no, you can't take those trees down in that right-of-way, and our other department saying, yes, we're doing it anyway. So, you know, again, it's got a very small impact. We're committed to an urban forest. I think that's going to kind of set us behind. And we also, we're dealing with street safety, and I think having trees kind of as barriers is important. And I had a house on Peak that had a sidewalk to nowhere 25 years ago, and it still is one. And people walking and cutting across the street, another safety issue. I have no sidewalk in front of my house, but we have sidewalks scattered throughout, and every day I see people cutting across. So, again, I think we need to look at the sidewalk issue and be reasonable. This takes out a little of that decision or variable. We can manage sidewalks differently. So, I am in favor of us, as submitted.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes, thank you. I'll take what you said and kind of expand on it. Years ago, the city had what was called the 50-50 Sidewalk Program, which required residents to pay for 50% of the cost, which to a lot of residents in Kirkwood, that was somewhat cost-prohibitive. And now, I can't even imagine. What this changes, so that everybody understands, is that if you had a 100% expansion to your home, you would be required to install a sidewalk. So, if the city tells a homeowner, if you're at 100%, you have to add the sidewalk. Well, the homeowner says, well, maybe I'll just change this to 90%. They make the addition at 90%, and there's still no sidewalk. Now, recently, we passed the Transportation Development District. That provides for funds specifically for sidewalks. In my mind, you know, if we hadn't passed the Transportation Development District, this might be a question. But, as you said, Councilmember Jack Sedick, this is a very small portion of our sidewalks. We received many emails from citizens saying we need more sidewalks, and I agree 100%. We need to continue expanding our sidewalk for safety. As a member of the original Vision Zero Subcommittee, sidewalks are an important part to keep Kirkwood's citizens safe. But with this TDD money and reviewing the plans for Vision Zero, we can still make sidewalks happen without making the homeowner do this. And again, it's such a small percentage, that even if somebody did 100%, it might be one sidewalk. So, I think that this makes sense. And what if it was 110%? It's such an arbitrary number that somebody could just work around that number to not put a sidewalk, and then we're back to no sidewalk. However, we have the TDD, which the citizens greatly supported, that's going to provide money to fill in our sidewalk program and make it safer for our citizens.
Thank you, yes. So, our master bike pad plan from 2015 calls for filling sidewalk gaps and providing new sidewalks. At the time it was adopted, the cost of adding prioritized sidewalks on just one side of the street was just over $20 million. That was in 2015. Progress has been slow but sure, and staff have been successful in winning grants to help move things along, but we still have a long way to go. To help implement the plan, our current sidewalk code calls for sidewalk gaps to be filled when new infill homes are built, when a vacant lot is developed with a new home, and when an existing homeowner builds a new addition that at least doubles the size of their existing home, which is what we're considering right now. These provisions were approved, the existing provisions were approved in 2021 after a comprehensive review of the zoning code. We've had lots of infill in the past 10 years. Had these provisions been in place years ago, for example, Andrews Avenue would now be lined with sidewalks along nearly both sides due to all the new infill. Today, there are, to my knowledge, there are no sidewalks, but lots of new houses. As it stands, so there are no sidewalks leading to Merrimack College or the Neighborhood Business District on West Woodbine, for example. That's a pretty good example of where there would be, would have been a major impact if all of these provisions had been followed. Yes, Mark, I agree, yeah, the citizens overwhelmingly passed the TDD, but a total of $4.8 million per year can't cover all the road projects and sidewalk projects that we have lined up. 20 years ago, the city budgeted about $250,000 a year for sidewalks. That amount, in recent years, has dwindled to less than $200,000 per year, and that's in actual dollars, not counting change, you know, change in CPI and all of that. Citizens and visitors love the fact that Kirkwood is walkable, that we're striving to make it even more so. Students who walk to school are more ready to learn when the bell rings. Sidewalks support healthy lifestyles, et cetera. Less pollution, less noise, getting cars off the road, fewer parking spots and pavement, all of the benefits of adding sidewalks, and I would hope accelerating, filling in, installing new sidewalks. This code has only been in place for about three years. The provision regarding home additions is being proposed to be eliminated. To my knowledge, this is the first time it's been triggered in the three years since it was enacted. Staff estimated to me that the cost of the sidewalk for 150 feet of a five-foot-wide sidewalk would have been minimal compared to the overall cost of the project, actually a small amount, I think. For the concrete, for pouring the sidewalk, would have been about $8,000. And the homeowner asked for a waiver and was granted. Okay, fine. When I was a kid growing up in Afton in the 1960s, there was one little strip of sidewalk along all of Matilda Avenue, which is between half and three-quarters of a mile. It was right across the street from my house. It was a sidewalk to nowhere, but for me, my sister, and my brother, that strip was our training ground, where we learned how to ride our first two-wheelers, up and down, back and forth, back and forth. Now, maybe it was within the past 15 years, there are finally sidewalks along that two-lane street. If we truly support becoming a more walkable community for the many benefits, including enhancing the value of homes on streets with sidewalks, I think we should find a more nuanced approach to this question than just eliminating this provision, which has barely been tested. Can we monitor how this provision goes? How many requests we get for sidewalk waivers before we just completely eliminate this? I mean, if we're going to require developers who put in a new infill home or develop a vacant lot to put in sidewalks, that cost of that sidewalk is going to be passed on to the new homeowner. They're not going to eat that, they're not going to just absorb that cost. So many things in municipal governance force us to be patient and persistent with getting things done. Filling sidewalk gaps is no different, and over the coming years, we'll see more and more progress, even if it's slow towards our goal of adding sidewalks that's going to help improve the health and safety of all who use them. And I think we should hang on to this provision in the code and just keep an eye on it and see, you know, if it really needs to go.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Lizzo.
I have a couple of brief comments on that. I agree that this specific section should be looked at in more detail. You know, the city is the one, and its residents, we want sidewalks. We want people to build additions and renovations as opposed to tear downs. So, why are we punishing a homeowner, we as a city, punishing a homeowner by making them require to put a sidewalk in? Going back to Nancy's comments, it was 8,000 for the sidewalk, and the homeowner said 20,000, so probably 12,000 for the trees, that makes sense. So, 20,000, that's not a small amount. That's a pretty large dollar amount. And so, with this TDD money coming in, I'd like to change it so that if someone that doubles the size of their house, the city's going to have to put the sidewalk in with the TDD money for the next 15 years, and let the city speak where, put its money where its mouth is on what the sidewalks, not the homeowner. It's, you know, I thought we're only spending 30,000 a year in sidewalks. That's what I thought Jonathan had told me, so I'm not sure where that money is coming from. I think you said a couple hundred thousand.
I think.
I'm in favor of looking at this particular section, but I'm not in favor of amending it as written.
You know, the only comment that I want to make is, you know, it's the duty of the municipalities to put in public right-of-ways, sidewalks in the public right-of-ways, and not the responsibility of citizens. Somebody else has already brought up the 100%. We moved it down to 99%. Somebody moved it down to 90%. It's just such an arbitrary number that I just have issues with that as well. that I, I just have issues with that as well. So anyway, those are a couple of comments that I have. Any additional comments?
I would only remind the council that based upon the negative vote from planning and zoning, this would require a supermajority for it to pass, five out of seven.
Now, this is the first reading.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Either reading, it still needs five out of seven.
Sorry.
All, all in favor of first reading approval of Bill 11064, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
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 Okay. Lutzau, she for McLean, nay, correct? Is that it? Okay, thank you.
Bill fails.
Bill fails, okay.
Bill 11066.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the provisions of the Municipal Code, Chapter 25, Zoning and Subdivision for Outdoor Lighting Requirements in Section 2552.
Do I have a motion and second to accept Bill 11066?
Second.
Discussion? I have an amendment to add, a motion that we change the bill to read. Sorry, I've got this. All lighting fixtures shall not exceed a correlated color temperature, CCT, of 2,700 Kelvin. So that's my motion. Do I have?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? We heard a lot of discussion last, during the public hearing last week.
Clarification, this is not streetlights. This is parking lots.
Commercial lighting.
And commercial lighting. And it's only for new permits, new construction, so, okay.
Correct, yeah. And it's not?
I'm saying no. Yeah, I think Jonathan has to clarify here.
It is only commercial lighting. It's not just for new construction. Any new fixtures installed, even if their project is just new lighting, if they're installing new fixtures, this would apply in commercial situations. So they could be doing nothing to their building, just to be clear. But if they are updating their fixtures and they're putting new fixtures in, they would have to comply. They have to provide us a lighting plan and they have to comply with all of our lighting regulations. So this provision would apply in that case, just.
Those fixtures, not changing light bulbs out.
Fixtures, put fixtures in, like no maintenance.
Not bulbs. You can change out bulbs, but most fixtures don't have bulbs anymore, to be honest.
Lot that's using 4,000 Kelvins now, I can keep that as long as they have that same fixture in place.
Yep, yep, yep.
Change that fixture, I need to.
Right, right, right.
And it's also noted it's not single-family residence. So it's not streets, it's not sidewalks. It's none of the other kinds of situations. All right. A vote on the, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
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 Now, the vote, the motion passes. And now we will have discussion on the bill as amended. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. So I wrote out my comments again, and I only have one page here, but it basically applied to the previous form of the bill. But in my view, this change, I think, makes it even more of an issue, requiring it only to be 2,700 Kelvin going forward. We live in an urban area with almost 30,000 citizens, 25% of whom are seniors, who knows how many with kids who are schools, little kids, young, young people, students. A lot of the complaint about LEDs is this thing about glare. What glare is inherent in all artificial lighting sources. It's, it's part of the sun that's burning up in the sky. Our lighting code already addresses the causes, the causes of lighting glare to ensure that streetlights are full cutoff and focused downward to ensure the light does not spread horizontally. It's not advisable to look directly at any light source at night, whether an auto headlight or a streetlight. When you're out and about at after dark, your eyes adjust to the darkness. Your pupils dilate to allow more light to come in so that you can see better. If you look at any artificial light source, a headlight, whatever, your pupils are automatically going to react and, and contract, and you'll have a reaction. Sometimes when it's such a bright light, you actually physically feel the change in, in your, in your vision. It takes a while to adjust. It is not recommended, even with existing lights, to look directly at a light. You, you would, it would, it's advisable to look down to the right, look away. Anyway, light trespass with our existing light code onto adjacent properties is also, also already strictly limited. Federal regulations call for adequate lighting to support public safety on the roads. Homeland Security calls for adequate lighting for first responders to support safety of schoolchildren walking to and from schools. That pathways and parking lots are well lit for the safety and security of pedestrians. Several businesses have recently installed 5,000 Kelvin lighting. This is the, the more white light on their parking lots. Presumably, their consultants and architects designed this because of the needs for illumination on their property for the security and, and the safety of their patrons. New, and, new and existing businesses will be prevented from installing the wider lights and apparently now even the sort of neutral 4,000 Kelvin with this new amendment. I'm not calling for the installation of 5,000 Kelvin lights everywhere in Kirkwood, but our downtown areas and areas along high-traffic roads. 5,000 Kelvin present a number of advantages over lights of lower color temperature. They provide a bright daylight-like illumination that enhances visibility in outdoor spaces, making it ideal for pathways, driveways, parking, parking areas, intersections. We want to make our walkable community as safe as possible for pedestrians so that drivers see people, even if they're wearing dark clothes at night, so that we can have a safer community. The, the 5,000 Kelvin also provides enhanced security that can deter potential intruders and improve overall safety around, around one's property. And the 5,000 actually has a, a high color rendering index, which ensures that colors appear natural under the light, which is beneficial for identifying objects more accurately. I'm a committed environmentalist. I put public safety and security ahead of any aesthetic considerations. And I feel like this is a broad brush being applied to this question that 27, that changing it to even a lower 2,700 Kelvin, which is a warm, yellowish, even orangish, orangish light is, is beyond what the needs of our downtown area and other specific areas would, 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 would require. Adequate and appropriate lighting should be tailored to the specific location to support safety and security for pedestrians, motorists, and as well as business owners and their properties. So I do not support this.
Mr. Zimmer.
Yes, thank you. I'll try and make this fairly brief. You know, to me, we talk a lot about safety, and I understand this is just for commercial properties. But, and we've talked about, you know, the ambiance and the color of lighting. But based on different conversations I've had with business owners and commercial property owners in Kirkwood and just even residents and people that visit Kirkwood and how dark some of the areas are, you know, our commercial property, we want safe. Ambiance is not a substitute for safety. It has its places, but 2,700 is, is on the dim side. And I also think too, you know, we put a lot of restrictions on our businesses. To me, a, a property owner, a business owner, I trust them enough to pick what kind of lights they want. That's, in, in my mind, you know, we want businesses to have some decision-making and let them decide if they want to have a more ambient light on their lot or if they want it brighter for security purposes. If it's, if it's a, you know, a high-end dealership that's got expensive vehicles, they might want a brighter light for safety. So those are my comments on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, yes?
I'm in favor of this. I would prefer to have 3,000 minimum, but, but I'm, I'm okay with 2,700. I, I, I respect their concerns and I agree with their concerns, like we all do, safety and things like that. If it's an issue a year, two years from now, we'll hear about it. I think if there's new.
We will.
Favor of it and idea, my mind open going forward.
And when you talk about safety, you talk about the, the health of our citizens. And brighter the lights, the more blue the lights, the less healthy they are for our citizens.
That's part of it, yep. Question?
Yes, Councilmember Reniker.
Mayor, I'm in favor of this because the two presentations we've heard, the one at the Y a couple of last year and this last couple of weeks ago, you can't confuse lumens, which is how well you see, with Kelvins. Kelvins is simply the color. Lumens the ability to see and the safety. So a lot of people confuse Kelvins with lumens. So I think lowering to 2,700 will make any difference on safety. I'm in favor of this.
No comments? Then all in favor of first reading approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
The bill has passed first reading approved. Where are we? 1106, Bill 11067.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the provisions of the Municipal Code, Chapter 25, Zoning and Subdivision for Accessory Structures Requirements in Sections 2542 and 2545.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Motion and a second.
Oh, sorry, motion and second, please.
Motion, second.
Okay, discussion on Bill 11067. I'll start it off. Just Settich. Tonight. Uh huh, you are. Like other discussions tonight, which have been great to have, and I appreciate the discussions that everybody has engaged in. This issue also highlights that we, as city council members, have a responsibility to consider all the broader implications for our community. And in this case, with this zoning change request. Not just one piece of property, one situation, but we are considering, you know, the impact, both direct and impact, direct and indirect. Currently, we are engaged with a stormwater management consultant group that is helping us look at our rather serious, growing stormwater issues. We've had a first-phase report, which maybe, the media said, you know, MSD has identified, I think, 34 areas of concern. Four of our top five might be somewhere in the budget in the next five years for MSD. And our consultant and staff are working on other areas of concern in this community. So we know we have a growing stormwater runoff problem. And as I used to always tell my kids when they were little, and I still tell them, when you're in a hole and you want to get out, quit digging. So, you know, we, we, we recognize we have issues. Even in the consultant kind of presentation, we talked about we had to start really looking at ordinances to try to mitigate some of this problem. At the same time, we are trying to fix what ails us right now. The, so that's kind of some background to it. This would potentially add a 2,500 square foot building on a piece of property. Again, you know, tied to the size and whether or not of the lot and whether or not the house is that big or bigger. And, and this could be potentially, and this is accessory building, it's not ADUs, but ADUs play in there. You could have a 750-square-foot ADU on top of a 750-square-foot garage with a 1,000-square-foot poolhouse attached to it. And in that 1,000-square-foot poolhouse, you could have two large dressing rooms with two half baths and a kitchen without a stove and a sitting room and dining room. So a 2,500 potentially square-foot building on the back of, or the middle, or the side, or wherever it can fit on the lot, seems a little excessive to me at this point. You know, I know Board of Adjustment, staff, planning and zoning have all done their job in evaluating this, but I'm not sure how much additional, like where we are in the stormwater management issue, you know, how much played into some of their recommendations. So I do think I am, I, we, we don't need to pass, my sense is we don't need to pass this tonight, that we can, once we get some of the other issues that are facing us, we can always revisit it to some of your discussion, you know, tonight too. We, you know, we're going to revisit things. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. This is just a bold step that I think has implications beyond what we are prepared to handle. And again, when you're in a hole you want to get out of, stop digging. Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember McLean.
How is it possible to address 2545 and 2536?
I think that may be better for Jonathan to address rather than me because he has the specific issues.
I'm going to put you on the spot. If you're not prepared, that's understandable.
I'll pull them up to make sure I'm referencing the right sections.
5B and 25.
45. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's loading right now, sorry. So 2536K, I assume, are the use-specific standards for accessory dwelling units, which all still apply. As Councilmember Jack Settich mentioned, square, maximum square footage for accessory dwelling units, all these regulations would still apply. There's no changes to those. And just to clarify, comment earlier, and hopefully you all understand this. So a special use permit, staff does not approve. I have no ability to approve that. That comes through the Planning and Zoning Commission to the city council. So every single request for accessory dwelling unit comes to this body. You can say no, as many as you want. And the, the minimum, the 36K, 24, 2536K are the minimum standards, right? And then special use permit, if there are site-specific conditions that you want to put on them, or a special use permit that makes sense because of the conditions, that's why we consider special use permits.
Actually, Jonathan. And I've had a lot of pleasant conversations with Linda Fenton, but I got to tell you, Linda, I didn't follow anything you were saying because 2536K deals with short-term rentals. That's not applicable. 25.
Actually, I think it's Ms. Scott, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I missed.
Sorry, Jamie.
And 2545 is just the standards for, for accessory uses. So again, those, I'm going to looking through them now. Yeah, these are, those, 2545 are the B is the accessory dwelling unit provisions, which would all still apply. So I don't know if that answers your question or not.
All right. All those in favor of first reading approval of Bill 11067, please say aye. Opposed, nay?
Correct.
Bill fails. Okay, we now move to council reports. Yes, Mr. Zimmer.
Just, we had quite the storm this last week. And thank you to the city staff and all of those that worked so very hard to deal with a storm. I know it's, it's not perfect. It's very difficult. I can tell you, personal firsthand experience, trying to shovel my own driveway was, was almost deadly. It was a very, very tough storm and, and our, our city staff. And our city staff and employees deserve thanks for their efforts in dealing with that because it was not easy. And I know not everybody is always 100% happy when the street is not completely cleaned immediately. But, you know, there are ramifications, and there's only so much equipment and so many hours in the day. And, you know, when it's eight degrees, the chemicals have a really tough time working. So thanks again to the staff and our employees for all of their hard work. I know it was not easy. It was not easy for the citizens. I had a lot of people reach out to me, hey, do you know somebody that can clear my driveway? Because I can't do it. So we all suffered together on this. So thank you for your dedication.
Thank you.
I ditto what Mark said there, that I think the staff and street department did a great job. We saw what Chris looked like after a couple of days. Was not a good thing for him. And then I have one other one, if you let me. I'd like to commend the firefighters and our first responders, as we do with police, but the fire department as well. They took care of three fires in the last three weeks, one being Texas Road House, one a house explosion as a mutual aid over in Glendale, and then a second fire that they went to. And I'd just like to say their professionalism, and all of them got home to their families safely. So thank you to the fire department.
Yes.
I would like to double up what you all were talking about in terms of the work of the street department, but also to recognize that water department, electric department, street department, all made arrangements for employees to be in hotels, ready in the event that those services were needed. And we also know our police and fire were ready as well. So we think of safety and storm mitigation activities. You know, the street's the most visible, but we do have a lot of departments that also had some emergency planning and actually operation, those like police and fire, who had to be also on the roads. In any event, you know, we get through the crisis, but I do think, you know, given some feedback we've gotten, it always helps to do debriefing and are there things we could do better? You know, what worked well? You know, I think those who were in the throes of it did an outstanding job. But, you know, we can always kind of learn from it. So again, it's across the board. The city administration had to juggle a lot of other, beyond just streets. But all has gone well, and I guess tonight we're going to get it again, so we get a second chance.
Oh, boy.
Add on to that.
Yes.
I agree with what I said, it wouldn't have mattered anyway if you got out because Lindbergh going north, you couldn't go anywhere. 270, you couldn't go anywhere. 40, you couldn't go anywhere. So, you know, kudos to Kirkwood for the work they did.
Yeah, on the subject of another storm tonight, I was at a little meeting today with the mayor, and she's already asked Russ if they're prepared for another storm. And we are, we've got plenty of salt and more on order if we need it. So we're not going to get caught, you know, blindsided.
And there are some of you who know you should not be out shoveling your driveways. I will not, I will not name names.
Looking at me.
There is a cardiac risk for those who get out there. And the last thing you want to hear, it's your, whatever follow-up is, but his driveway was clear.
Nah. Yeah.
Yeah.
All righty. Chief Administrative Officer, report.
I have nothing to report at this time, Mayor.
Okay, all right.
And same, nothing to report.
All right. See no further business, this meeting is now adjourned. The next regular meeting will be, is scheduled for Thursday, January 23rd, 2022.